We all set upstairs?
Sorry, thank you.
Please wave.
Call the order, the Planning and Zoning Board meeting for the City of Tarpon Springs, January 12th, 2015 at 7:01 PM. Let's begin with the roll call.
Mrs. Protos?
Here.
Mr. Parker? Mr. Carr?
Here.
Mr. Hesse?
Here.
Mr. Geolusis? Ms. St. Arnold?
Here.
Chairman Vincent?
Here.
First item on the agenda is for the approval of the minutes of the meeting of November 17, 2014.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion of second for approval. Now, clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
I can vote on this either over here, right? Is that right? Do I need to?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
The Board Attorney will review the judicial, quasi judicial announcement to inform everyone about the procedures in quasi judicial hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are quasi judicial proceedings where this board acts in the quasi judicial capacity. This board is not the final decision maker on the applications before this evening. It is advisory to the Board of Commissioners. Its job is to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on the applications before it. By law, it is this board's function at this hearing to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the city's code to make a decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application and the applicable code sections. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code, the board is required by law to recommend in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if that evidence demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet those criteria, the board is required to recommend against the applicant. The parties to this hearing are the applicant and the city. The city is represented by city staff. There may be persons, organizations, or groups that qualify as interveners. Persons or groups that qualify for intervenor status can participate in the hearing as a party. A recognized intervene or may examine witnesses, present evidence, and make arguments to the board. For a person to be granted intervenor status, the person must demonstrate to the board that he or she will suffer an adverse effect as a result of the quasi judicial decision which exceeds in degree that which may be suffered by the general community. Intervener status may be granted to the representative of an organization or group of persons who have a substantial and compelling interest in the matter under consideration if that organization or group can demonstrate that it is prepared to present competent and substantial evidence which would be of significant assistance to the board in making its decision. In a few minutes, the chairperson will give persons, organizations, or groups desiring intervenor status the opportunity to make that request. There is an established procedure which will be followed at this quasi judicial hearing. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant and recognized interveners will have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff and any city witnesses. The applicant will then present its witnesses and evidence. The city staff and recognized interveners will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Recognized interveners will then present their evidence and witnesses. City staff and the applicant will have the opportunity to cross-examine the interveners' witnesses. Absent unusual circumstances to be determined by the board, a party's opening statement and presentation is limited to 10 minutes. At that point, we'll proceed to the public comment portion of the meeting. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public opposing the application have concluded, members of the public in support will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. A member of an organization or group granted intervenor status who testifies as part of the group's presentation forfeits the right to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. During the public comment portion of the meeting, members of the public present at the hearing may donate their time to a speaker to extend that speaker's time, but in doing so, the person donating the time forfeits his or her right to speak. Each donation shall extend the speaker's time an additional two minutes, but in no event shall the speaker's time be extended beyond 10 minutes of total speaking time. Following public comment, the applicant, city staff, and recognized interveners will have an opportunity to present rebuttal evidence and make a closing argument or summary. The applicant will go first, followed by city staff and any interveners. Absent unusual circumstances to be determined by the board, a party's closing summary and rebuttal evidence will be limited to 10 minutes each. Following this, the board will consider the matter. I would ask at this time for all witnesses who intend to testify tonight, either as a party or intervenor, to be stand and be sworn. Ask you to raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'd ask at this time whether there are any conflicts of interest on the board that should be disclosed at this juncture on any of the applications before you tonight. Seeing none, I'll ask whether there are any ex parte communications on any of the applications before you tonight. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. First, the next item on the agenda is the Application 14-72, Conditional Use Permit for City Reclaimed Water Facilities.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, before you start, please ask for intervenor status on any of the applications before us tonight so that we can get that out of the way.
Do we have any persons or organizations who wish to seek intervenor status that was described to you by our Board Attorney? Thank you.
Hello, by now you know who I am. Joshua Langen, Principal Planner here. I'm going to go ahead and give a brief overview of my staff report here, and then I'll have Bob Robertson come in and better explain the project. He's the engineer in charge. What you have here is you have a two-part, you have two items here relating to the same project. We need a conditional use permit to simply allow public facilities in this zoning district, and then we need a site plan. So what you're looking at is some facilities related to reclaimed water, a tank and some piping and such. You can see the, we, the city, are the applicant. We are attempting to locate these facilities on our golf course. Golf course is very big, it's a very large piece of property with trees and the ability to put facilities in various places. The land development code does allow for this sort of thing, but we have to get a conditional use permit, which is why we're here today. The property appears appropriate. Like I said, it's a very large piece of property, so it's the kind of thing, we're not trying to just squish on here. It's going to be placed in an advantageous location. It's consistent with goals, objectives, policies, this comprehensive plan. You'll see more of that in the site plan review. Will not result in a significant adverse impact in the environment. Will not adversely affect adjoining property values. You know, and I'll say that, I know that the city has done public workshops sort of around the city, and they've shown pictures, they've shown renderings, they've shown what it's going to look like, and I believe they put it in the best possible place to give us water and minimize impact. That's really more near the road and near the golf course than potential homes. It certainly will not accept, you know, affect the ability or exceed the city's ability to provide water because, well, that's the whole point here, is we're providing more facilities, we're providing more capacity. So that's sort of a brief overview, basically staff's recommendation, at least from the Planning and Zoning Department, is to recommend approval of the conditional use. And I'll go ahead and let Mr. Robertson add to this, unless you wanted to ask me questions before I leave the podium.
Should we take these separately, since they're related, these two applications, one for conditional use and one for the site plan?
That's at the board's leisure, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend that since they are related, it might be easier to do one presentation. You need to take two votes on the separate applications, but the presentations could certainly be made together.
I agree. If there's no objections from the board members, let's do that to make it easier for the staff as well as for us, and we'll just do it with two motions to consider at the end.
All right. I'll give a brief run-through then of Application 14-73, and then we'll let Bob come in and finish up. 14-73 is the associated site plan of the same project. Much of the background is the same here, and the only thing I'll point out is when you start reading our comprehensive plan, we do have goals to provide, you know, public facilities, to provide facilities in a cost-effective manner. You know, we have utilities goals of having potable water, of having reclaimed water. We have goals of setting 75% offset of our potable water by reclaimed water. With regards to concurrency, this will, you know, of course, only help not only the city, but future projects meet concurrency because we're increasing the capacity of our water supply. So similar to the other one, staff does recommend support of the project and does recommend approval, so I'll go ahead and let Bob go ahead and talk about these two.
Thanks, Josh. Again, my name is Bob Robertson. I work for the city. I'm the Public Services Program Manager. I'm an engineer. And with me tonight is Emily Moore from Tetra Tech, the engineering firm that did most of the design work for the project. I don't really have much more to add from what Josh said, other than to tell you that this is a reclaimed water project. As he said, it provides offset of potable water, reclaimed water using for irrigation instead of potable water, so it does, in fact, extend potable water supply. It is a 5 billion gallon storage tank and a pump station and piping that goes with it. We currently have 4 million gallons of storage for reclaimed water in the city, so this more than doubles our supply. It's a nice-sized project. I will also add that the project is cooperatively funded by the Southwest Florida Water Management District. About 46% of the funding comes from the Water Management District. And if there's any questions, we're here to answer them.
Can you explain the presentations to the community that the staff has done or the city has done?
Sure, I'd be glad to. We had two large public involvement, public information meetings. The first, they were both held at the golf course. The first was in October, and we did a hangtag public notification for all the communities directly adjacent to the golf course, and then some even beyond that, something to the effect of 500 hangtags we put out. We did that meeting in October, and we noticed that no one from the Green Dolphin showed up, which is the most, the closest facility to the golf course. And we said, well, that's really odd. Let's make sure that we get their input because they're going to be the most closely affected by this. So we had another public meeting, in this case, in this instance, we went to each and every resident at the Green Dolphin and distributed that information brochure that you have in front of you, the big full-color one there, as well as a special invitation. And we got a pretty good turnout for that. I'm going to be making a presentation to the Board of Commissioners tomorrow night, as a matter of fact, where I go through some of the major questions that we got from public comment, things like, what about the color of the tank? Can we make it a nicer color? We came up with a nice green instead of the beige and white that you see in your backup. Can we bury the tank? How deep can we go? And we actually did. We were able to lower it about five feet on average. As long as we stay above the groundwater table, we can do that. The one that you see there is right at ground level, so it's going to be a little bit deeper than that. Can we move it up to the north? Indeed, we did. We were able to shift it just a little bit, staying within the floodplain boundaries thing, outside of the floodplain, excuse me. So we listened, we did the best we could with what we had to try to accommodate some of the public's questions and concerns.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, two, actually. How long does it, how long will this project take? And what effect will it have on the golfers that we get revenue from?
First question, how long will it take? Assuming the board gives us authorization to move forward to bid the project for construction, I'm thinking in about March timeframe, we'll be able to begin construction. Construction estimates put us roughly around September for completion. Doesn't take that long to build these tanks. Surprisingly, these companies that specialize in these tanks, they know what they're doing. They're very, they're pros. I'm sorry, what was the second question?
Second question, what, does it affect the players at all?
Well, I've heard jokingly that it's going to be a great big target, but one of the effects of shifting that tank to the north a little bit was it takes a little bit further out of play from, I believe it's Fairway 2. It had to make a turn, and now it shifts it back a little bit further out of the way there. So from the informal interviews I've had with other golfers, it doesn't seem to be too much of an effect on golf course play. The only one site, if one hole that it'll affect is the tee box for, I think it's number seven? Number nine? It has to get shifted a little bit to the northeast to make room for the tank, and we have to redirect a cart path, but other than that, it doesn't change the distance of that hole or anything.
I have a few questions. Will it affect any way the ball fields or the young people who have the recreation there in their soccer fields and baseball fields there?
No, the piping goes around the ball fields. It doesn't even come through them, and the tank is far enough away that it'd have to be pretty awesome home run for you to hit that tank.
There wasn't any other property available to put that tank except for the golf course because we used to have a PGA golf course here.
Yeah.
I've heard some of the golfers, I've overheard them talking, you know, and I'm not a golfer, so the concern was, you know, getting interference with their times and their games and stuff.
Yeah, I can understand that concern, and that's why we did do some informal interviews with golfers. And to answer your question, we did look at other sites, but the golf course is really the ideal site for many reasons. The first is that it's in close proximity to most of the residents that we're going to be expanding to, West Bend, Oak Leaf, Grassy Point, and the Castle Works area. Those are the areas that have shown the most interest in receiving reclaimed water, so there's that factor. The other is that the single largest user of reclaimed water in Tarpon Springs is golf course. So putting it on the golf course makes a whole lot of sense for a lot of reasons, but one is you have proximity to supply. The second is we get to utilize the existing infrastructure for irrigation. We don't have to, we don't have to supercharge this water to put it at high pressure to irrigate the golf course. The golf course can continue to use its existing system. So there's a whole bunch of advantages. Another site we thought about, and a question I got, was can we put it over at the landfill? That's a nice, big, open site. Nice, big tank would look good there and might fit there. Issues there are wetlands in that landfill, and then, of course, you've got a capped landfill. So anytime you build something on the landfill cap, you probably will have to puncture that cap. It's not just putting something on the surface. You've got loads on that that you've got to sustain, which would require pilings or some alternative foundation. So the landfill, aside from all the crazy permitting issues you might face, was a site we looked at and had to eliminate. So the golf course really wound up being the best location.
In reading this, and I'm not an engineer, will that holding tank in any way help alleviate the overflow that the county's been working on in that pond at the golf course in alternate nineteen?
That's a really good question, and in fact, I believe it will because, for one main reason, the way the irrigation system works now, reclaimed water from the wastewater tank, from the wastewater system, wastewater plant, excuse me, is pumped to the golf course and stored on those ponds. So that's reclaimed water, that's irrigation water that's occupying stormwater storage on the site. There's a couple of great advantages. One, we're not going to be using that pond quite as much, and we still will need it, but not nearly as much, so that moves that and creates more storage available for storm water, just as the point you're making. The other is that we're going to make better use of that reclaimed water because water that goes in those unlined ponds gets lost to evaporation and percolation, and it's really inefficient use, way to store reclaimed water. So if we can put it in a tank, we can use every drop of it instead of losing it to evaporation, and we create that volume available, make that volume available for storm water.
Very good.
I think so.
Scott working on the third one in my area.
The third one in your area, okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
I just want to confirm, this is, it's just a holding tank, right? And some pipes? It's not open air like we have across the street at all?
It is, yeah, it's a holding tank. It's a closed, enclosed, domed storage tank.
Compared to the ones we have across the street with the cool purple lines around the top of them, size-wise, are those relatively close to the same height, or what are we looking at?
Be about the same height, but much larger in diameter.
Wider?
Yeah, those are 2 million gallons each. This one's going to be 5 million gallons.
Pretty big.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, we don't have to talk about necessarily color isn't really what we focus on here, but I think green would ultimately end up fading, and then you have to paint it more than like the sand brown that you guys were initially talking about. And, but that's neither. And I've got a couple of questions about how you guys are going to cover it up. I see there's like some guidelines with, looks like trees are going to be planted around the outside of the tank. I was just curious, it looks like, I mean, you've got some tall trees, you've got some, a lot of flower-blooming trees. I mean, was there a talk of like cedars more, really just to kind of block it off entirely from the Green Dolphin or whatever may be looking at it? Because when you look at it, it's still going to be a sore eye looking at it. So I think there's potentially, there's a better chance to plant more maybe on the east side of the tank to really buffer that. Because I mean, we're looking from the north side of the tank is really the ball field, it's not that big of an issue.
Right.
South side, I mean, there's a lot of golf course on the south side, I think, and then even to the west, there might be some wetlands or something. So was there more thought into putting maybe something else that substantially could really buffer it off instead of maybe 10 years, 15 years down the road, it's finally buffered off?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, this just in, one of the species that we had designated in the plans is prohibited in the ordinance. I didn't realize that when we did it. It's the Norfolk pines, Norfolk Island pines?
Yeah.
Ah, that's what I hear. So those are coming out of the plan set, and we're going to replace those. And we were just talking this evening about replacing those with a red cedar or something to that effect.
Okay.
And most of the plantings are going to be on that east side and north side, as you say.
Another question I have, too, is, that makes sense, and I think that's a good choice on that. You've got a long-leaf pine. We've got, there's pine trees all over the golf course, and being familiar with irrigation systems, pump houses, and stuff along those lines, lightning strikes are like, they're a great lightning strike conductor, is a long-leaf pine. But those will blow all types of valves and all types of issues. Has, I mean, has that been considered at all with putting those in around the tank, around the pump house, putting long-leaf pines in? When they get to be about 40, 60 feet, what's going to happen when the lightning strike strikes these trees and goes into the pumps and blow them out? Is that, I mean, have we talked about that? Have we kind of looked at other alternatives to prohibit that with lightning rods or whatever may be?
Well, it may be a situation where when those trees start to get to those heights that we prune them back and replace them with some other trees to sort of keep a lush screening there. But to go towards the lightning side, these tanks are typically provided with cathodic protection and lightning protection, so they, you know, they build the, they put a big wire and then lightning rods that go all the way up to these tanks to dissipate the charge so you don't have that risk.
Okay. Yeah, you don't, what you're commenting, you usually don't trim pine trees, but that's up to.
What I meant was, cut them off, come down.
They can be topped, I think.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions before our next presenter?
Actually, I have one more question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you explain, how's this coming in? I see that there's pipeline coming through by the ball fields. Where's the inflow and outflow? Is it the same pipe, or is it a?
Actually, we're going to put a double-barrel piping. Two pipes are going to run up through there so that we can fill the tank and draw from the tank at the same time with a valving, valve in between at the connection point there, so the system is isolated so that it can be very flexible.
Great, thanks.
Sure.
I'd like to ask the Planning Department a question. The city has met every criteria that they're supposed to?
Yes, they have. They've given a full submittal.
And the reason I'm asking this is because I've been accused of asking too many times. Have applicants met all their criteria?
Yeah, I understand.
So that's why I'm doing it to the city, so we'll stay in same mode.
City was very thorough, very thorough. They submitted a very complete package.
I can see that in the report, and thank you very much for such a thorough report.
Thanks for the, I'll thank the Engineering Department for doing all the work.
Any other presentation on the behalf of the city for this application, for either one of the applications?
No.
This time, we'll open the floor for public comment, either for or against. Let's start if there's anyone who would like to speak for on behalf of the applicant, the application of the city. This is both for the conditional use as well as for the site plan. Seeing none, is there anyone that wishes to speak against the project, either one of these? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the hearing, and we'll now take comments from the board or discussion, or open it for a motion and then discussion. Remember, we'll need two motions, two separate motions, so let's do one at a time. The first one would be the conditional use application.
So move for the approval of Application 14-72, Conditional Use Permit for City Reclaimed Water Facilities.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Carr, seconded. Any discussion on the conditional use application by the board? Call the question. Clerk, if you want to roll call for the vote.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes. That takes care of the conditional use, and next would be consideration of the Application 14-73, the site plan for the City Reclaimed Water Facilities. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept Application 14-73 as it stands.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion by the board?
I think it's a good move the city's making. There's been a pretty high demand for reclaimed water throughout the city, and it's run short a lot of times, so it's great to see more opportunity for our citizens here, for these guys.
Comments? I'd like to add that I'm glad to see not only the increase in the facility for the reclaimed water, but that the city has made a good effort to communicate with the affected residents, and that's one of my major concerns when I first looked through the application. And I appreciate the city going the extra mile to do that.
Roll.
Okay, we're ready for the vote?
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is Application 14-48, Annexation. Actually, there's several related parcels or applications. I'll go ahead and mention them all right now. And the other is Application 14-47, that's a Future Land Use and Zoning Amendment for Race Track Parcel 1. Application 14-47, Future Land Use and Zoning Amendment for Race Track Parcel 2. And Application 14-59, Site Plan for Race Track Gas Station and Market Store. Steve?
Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you. Steve Coretia, Planning and Zoning Director. With your consent, Mr. Chairman, this presentation will cover Items 6, 7, 8, and 9 in one general presentation and then separate actions like just before with the city's facility. But this property is 1.8 acres located at the southwest corner of US 19 and Klosterman Road. The property generally consists of two parcels. We have Parcel 1, it's about .87 acres, which is currently under the jurisdiction of Pinellas County, and that's the parcel that's developed with the existing gas station. Future land use in the county is currently residential office retail and its own CP1 commercial parkway. Parcel 2, that's about .93 acres, that's within city limits. That's the site that's developed with the existing parking lot for the college. Future land use is institutional, and it's owned currently public, semi-public. Applicant's intent is to redevelop the site with a new racetrack, gas station, and market store. To do that, four applications were required, and those are the four applications in your packet tonight. There was an annexation required for Parcel 1, future land use and rezoning changes for Parcells 1 and 2, and then a site plan for both parcels. The annexation will bring Parcel 1 into the city. The intent is to change that future land use from county ROR to the city residential office retail, and to rezone that parcel to HB, Highway Business. Same thing for Parcel 2. Future land use change will go to residential office retail, rezoning to HB. Uh, same thing for parcel two, future land use change will go to residential office retail, rezoning to HB highway business. The site plan included with the packet that it was, did show on a, almost a six thousand square foot market store convenience store. Ten fueling stations for the gas station, uh, with twenty spots for vehicles to fuel. Public notice for the annexation of future land use and rezoning, it did include sending postcards to surrounding property owners. We did provide all our legal ads to the paper. We also posted the property. In looking at each of the cases for an annexation review criteria, we are required in section two oh eight of the city's comprehensive zoning and land development code, as well as Florida statute, section one seventy-one, point zero four three. They set out certain criteria for annexations, such things as the annexation will not create an enclave, that the city is able to serve the property with city utilities and services, and that the annexation is consistent with the future land use map. Staff in reviewing these items, we do find it does meet the review criteria. As such, we are recommending approval of the annexation request. With regards to the future land use amendments and the rezoning amendments for both parcels, again, we have criteria set forth in the city's land development code, as well as chapter one sixty-three, part two of the Florida statutes. A couple of those criteria, and again, these are all established in the staff report, so I don't wanna read them verbatim. But just a few of those criteria, one that would not discourage proliferation of urban sprawl, that we would promote access across property lines. Uh, we would look at reducing a number of curb cuts and providing connectivity between sites. And with looking at the future land use map amendments for parcels one and two, uh, staff did look at that. We do find that it meets the criteria and we are recommending approval of the future land use amendments. With the zoning amendments, again, the, the city's comprehensive zoning and land development code provides certain standards that the zoning will be consistent with the future land use. And the intent is that the HB, the highway business is consistent with the residential office retail land use intended for the properties. That the new use will be compatible with existing and planned uses in the area. Uh, the site is an existing gas station now. Uh, the intent being a, an improved gas station site development will be consistent and compatible with the area. And also that'll provide for efficient and orderly development. Again, it's an existing site. The new improvement should provide for greater efficiencies. So in reviewing the rezoning criteria, staff did look at those. We are recommending approval of the parcels one and two zoning changes. And for the site plan, we do have criteria set forth in section two oh seven, point oh two, two oh seven, point oh three of the city's land development code, as well as chapter one sixty-three, part two of the Florida statutes. Again, the site plan criteria. Apologize, I was quoting the wrong section there. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. With site plans, we're looking at section two ten, point oh three for our land development code. And again, we're looking for correct consistency with our comprehensive plan, our comprehensive land development code, including such things as our concurrency management system. Uh, we're looking at the future land use map. Is this site plan consistent with the category of our, that we're intending to residential office retail? And with the HB, the highway business zoning. Uh, this application, the site plan did go to the technical review committee. Uh, it was determined that the site plan did meet the land development code, our comp plan. As such, we are recommending approval of the site plan. Overall, Mr. Chairman, uh, board members, staff is recommending approval of all four applications for the reasons mentioned in the staff reports and with this presentation. Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my part of the presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for the staff on the presentation?
They have met in this plan, every criteria that is requested by the city.
Mr. Chairman?
They've left nothing to come back. They've met everything they're supposed to meet in this. And reading through this, I wanted to make sure.
Mr. Chairman, board members, yes. And the technical review committee, staff, and looking at this, uh, we are comfortable with this application, the site plan, the amendment, the zoning. We are comfortable, uh, applicant is, is, to my knowledge, comfortable. They're ready to move forward to the next step.
One hundred percent ready to go without coming back for anything.
Yes, ma'am. Unless plans change on applicant's side, we're ready to move them.
That's understood, yeah. Now, the other question is, there's already a filling station, a gas station there. Is the police department in their traffic department satisfied with using the same exits and entrances that they have now with all the traffic? Did they make any recommendations to change anything?
They moved them. They made them, uh, farther from the intersection.
I want it in, from him in the minutes.
Well, the applicant, I'm sure will explain that in the site plan.
Yeah, I want it in the minutes here from the planning department for a reason. I don't want them coming back and blaming us.
Mr. Chairman, board members, yes, that is correct. They did move that, the intersections further from the intersection. Technical review committee was acceptable with that endeavor. Again, the applicant can also explain.
Then that's cleared our planning department. That's why I want it in the minutes. I've learned lessons. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other board member have questions of the staff?
Not at this time.
Thank you. We'll hear it now from the applicant.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name's Katie Cole with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, three eleven Park Place, suite two forty, Clearwater, Florida, representing the applicant racetrack. Uh, the applicant, uh, applied, we've been in conversations with the city actually since springtime. This was a bit of a complicated application due to the two pieces of the property, one of which needed to be annexed in and the land use and zoning component of it. Um, so we've been working closely with staff, uh, both your former staff and your current staff, with, uh, Dave Healy being our, uh, our shepherd through this process for the past several months. And we appreciate all the work they've done. Uh, the applicant does concur with the staff reports and the points that they, uh, made in the report with respect to meeting the criteria within the code, specifically to respond to Mrs. Protos' uh, question about the, uh, access points. They have been adjusted. The police department and the fire department were both present at TRC and reviewed the site plan at that time. And they have been adjusted to be moved farther away from the intersection in an effort to make a, a better functioning site. And, and frankly, we don't have much evidence to add. We do have the engineer here and the applicant. We're comfortable with staff, staff report, um, does respond to the criteria in the code to give you all the basis for approval. We would respectfully request that. I will add, if you haven't seen one of the new racetrack stations, is it does replace an existing gas station on the site. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised with the difference between what's proposed and what's existing while it is significantly larger. The architecture, um, is also, uh, very, very nice. If you haven't been to the Pinellas Park Store or up in Pasco County at the Livingston Store, that those are similar to what is being proposed here. The architectural elevations were at one point submitted to the city, but I don't know that they made it into your packets. So I'm happy to pass those around and if we can include these in the record as well.
You have more copies.
And with that, I'll, I'm happy to, uh, reserve any additional time that I may have and respond to any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Any questions from the board members for the applicant? Ms. Protos?
No, it was very thorough.
Mr. Hoss?
No, sir.
Mr. Carr? Ms. St. Arnold?
No, thank you.
I have just one or two questions.
Sure.
I noticed the, the new parcel is the, uh, purchased parking lot for the college. Is that correct?
Correct. A portion of their existing parking lot.
Will that still be, uh, used as parking for jointly with your business as well as the, uh, SPC? Or is that just gonna be, uh, I mean, is it gonna be any kind of a shared parking facility?
There is not shared parking on the racetrack site. Um, there is cross-access. But the parking at the college still exceeds the required parking for the college by, I'll look at Dave. Sorry.
The, um, required parking is, uh, one thousand thirty-two parking spaces for the college. They will, they will, there will remain one thousand two hundred and forty-seven. So the college does lose some parking that is now contained within the proposed racetrack site, but they have adequate complement of parking remaining. Thank you, Mr. Healy. And the other question I had, Ms. Cole, was about the, uh, the gas storage can, uh, tanks for the product. Will those be, uh, new tanks installed or are they gonna still use the, the tanks that are in place?
There will be new tanks installed. And we do have racetrack here if you'd like to hear directly from them.
Well, it's more of a matter of curiosity. I'm assuming that, you know, what's gonna be done is gonna meet the codes, but I was just curious.
There, there's a specific process, um, that's outlined with respect to removing old tanks, replacing tanks and installing new tanks. And all of that would be followed.
Right. Any other questions from the board members? Thank you, Ms. Cole. All right, this time we'll ask, uh, if there's any comments from the public regarding these applications on the, uh, proposed racetrack, um, gas station. That's on the southwest corner of, uh, Klosterman Road and US nineteen. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of the applications? Seeing none, is there anyone in the public that would, wishes to speak, uh, in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the, uh, presentation now and go to, uh, the board for motions. We'll need s- four separate motions and then of course discussion after each motion.
I'll make a motion of application fourteen dash forty-eight, the annexation for racetrack.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments or discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Hossi?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes. Approves the annexation of the, uh, the parcel.
So move.
Well, the next one is application fourteen dash four seven. Do we have a motion on that?
So move for approval.
I'll make a motion for application fourteen dash forty-seven, the future land use and zoning amendment for racetrack parcel one.
Nita went ahead and made the motion.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right, I'll second it. Go ahead and make it, I'll second it.
Second, thank you. Sorry, I am so sorry.
That's quite all right.
That's all right. She made the motion, I'll second.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, no matter who made it. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Hossi?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes. And we have, uh, another application to consider. Is there a motion?
So move for approval of fourteen, uh, forty-seven, uh, future land use and zoning amendment for racetrack parcel two.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments or discussion from the board members? Seeing none, let's have the vote.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Hossi?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes. Final application is for the, uh, site plan approval.
I'll make a motion for this fourteen dash fifty-nine site plan, uh, uh, site plan for racetrack, gas station and market store.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion by the board members?
It's gonna be a nice upgrade.
Welcome to Tarpon Springs.
Okay, we're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Hossi?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Cole.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is application fourteen dash forty-seven, alternate dimension plan for Cypress Trails of Tarpon Springs.
As you can see, we do have two related cases here, fourteen seventy-four and fourteen oh nine. It's really up to the chairman and I guess the board as a whole as to whether they wanna take them at once or separately.
Mr. Langdon, we'll go and take them together as far as the presentations and vote separately as we did before.
I'd just like to advise and I don't know, maybe our attorney will correct me, that I think it's probably a good idea when, if, to vote on fourteen seventy-four first and make it contingent upon a successful vote fourteen oh nine.
The reasons why, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Say that again?
I'll give the staff review and I'll remind you, but we, I'll give the presentation all at once, but you're gonna vote separately on fourteen seventy-four and fourteen oh nine?
Right.
And when you vote on fourteen seventy-four, I would advise you to make it contingent upon successful approval of fourteen oh nine. The reason for that is, um, you know, we don't wanna, want to have an approval of a document followed by a document that may not be approved, because then you have sort of contradictory, uh, message to the applicant. And, uh, it, it's actually suggested in the staff report and I'll go over that again when I go through the staff report.
It makes a lot of sense. Uh, just, you might wanna remind us at the time.
I will. All right, fourteen seventy-four, um, it's an alternative dimension plan. This is explicitly laid out in the district requirements for RM ten that says that if for any reason the lot size or lot configuration needs to be changed, uh, you can apply for one and go through the conditioning use permit process to do so. So this is the applicant, um, not only following the code, but following staff's direction. In a previous site plan that we looked at in November, there were some question as to, should the lots extend to the middle of the road? And, and how do we best configure and make these lots a certain size to meet the code? And felt staff had, felt, staff felt it would be much cleaner and clearer if the lot stayed out of the road. And the consequence of lots staying out of the road was that they would need to have, uh, in a, in a couple of cases, lots that are slightly shorter than what are called for. Therefore, you have an alternative dimension plan in front of you. So I'll, I'll go over this staff report. Um, we've, we've seen a version of the site plan before. This is the same project. Uh, basically what we're asking for, and you can see on sheet one very clearly, they have laid out which lots are requiring a lot depth of less than one hundred, which is the normal standard. And exactly what and where they are requesting. So that's the purpose of this application. You know, we're in an RM ten zoning district. The background is, we've, we've looked at this project a number of times and, and we have given some, some approvals previously to twelve fourteen, uh, land use plan and zoning amendment. Fourteen thirty-two, we waived some wetland buffer and sidewalk requirements and reduced some rear yard setbacks. Fourteen thirty-three, it's pending. Uh, this board gave approval of a Pine Street right of way. And then fourteen thirty-seven, um, a sidewalk variance that was approved as well for the clubhouse. So this has some history to it. When we look at standards of review, uh, when we're comparing it to land development code, uh, conforming with the requirements of land development code, as I mentioned before, the way to conform to the land development code is to simply do an alternative dimension plan to, uh, to clear up a few of the lot, uh, depth issues that would normally conflict, but now wouldn't should this be, uh, approved. Uh, evaluated for scale, mass, intensity, location, size, height, style and aesthetics are a number of the, the factors that we need to keep in mind when we're, when we're looking at this. Basically, as, as you can see on sheet one, we're looking at, uh, twenty-four lots with a Basically, as you can see on sheet one, we're looking at 24 lots with a depth of 90 points, 90 and a half feet, and then we're looking at, you know, a handful of lots in phase two that are going to be at 95 feet, so just shy of 100. You know, I'll state it in the staff report that the unusual configuration of the site and the presence of environmental man-made constraints don't really allow the applicant to run a streets the way he has and have double-loaded streets. And that's the trade-off you're considering tonight is, if it wasn't for the alternative dimension plan, it would be, I don't know how feasible it would be to do streets that have lots on both sides. You might be able to have a street that runs around the pond and you have lots on one side, but if you want to get lots on both sides of the street, you have to make some concessions here to make those lots fit. You know, and whether those concessions are worth the project or not is entirely up to you. The site is difficult to develop. It is a unique site. It is constrained. So, that's what we're looking at, and the question is to, without this, would it be feasible? That's tough to say. I mean, in this economy with the cost of building, with the cost of acquiring land, would only building lots on one side of the street be even financially feasible? I'm not sure. I think it'd be difficult. It'd be very difficult to design a project with just half of the street with lots on it. So, having said that, the trade-off again is you're helping the applicant to configure a bad site. You're helping him build into a site that is, just has the pond in the wrong place and has a power easement and this stuff. Your trade-off there is it's going to, it's going to, A, require variances to the buffer, and it's going to have some lots going into the wetlands, it's going to have some lots that back up to a power easement. It's going to, it's going to have some scale issues. You're going to see a lot of buildings when you pull up to this thing. They are having to be put on a constrained portion of the site. They can't be spread out. So, there's, that's your trade-off basically, is assisting the applicant with building the property versus what we're getting, which is going to be a site that's had to been basically shoehorned in here. So, to go through the rest of this, use to which property may be put is appropriate to the area? Well, certainly, it's a residential area. This is a residential project. Consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies, when you look to the comprehensive plan, when you look to comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan encourages housing. It encourages appropriate housing. It encourages multifamily housing in the correct areas, housing for workers and housing for, you know, the population is shown to grow in Tarpon Springs, and we have to put these people somewhere. So, yes, this housing project does meet the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, with the exception that comprehensive plan really doesn't want any infringement upon the buffer to wetlands. However, in this case, a variance was granted, and there is, the entire buffer isn't affected, just some portion of it has been affected. Will not result adverse impact to the environmental or historical resources? Certainly not historical. I think if all the stormwater is designed correctly, I think we can minimize, if not eliminate, environmental damage. You do have some homes that are backing up to the wetlands. You know, the applicant, the engineer and I have had numerous discussions about how the gutters are going to work along the back of the roof, how the swales are going to run along the back, and all the water is going to be brought towards the street and away from the wetlands. Having said that, it is possible that a storm event could overwhelm, you know, the gutters and those swales in the back, and you could get some sort of runoff into your wetlands. So, that's just something you have to consider. It is, there's some possibility there. Actually, I want to back up, I'm sorry. Going back to the goals, objectives, policies, comprehensive plan, I wasn't quite sure where to put this analysis, but if you look at the plan, some of these lots do back up to the wetland themselves, and some of the buildings back up to the wetlands themselves. I spoke to the applicant about this, and I said, "What's going to happen here? You can't put a deck or patio back there." And the applicant said, "Well, we're going to do an internal sunroom, internal deck." So, building envelope is what you see there is not the typical townhome building envelope for those lots backing up to the wetlands. It's not going to be a, somebody's going to come into my office and apply for a deck. That's not going to happen. What's going to happen is they're going to have an internal screened or glassed enclosure in the back of the townhome envelope you see, so there will be no need to have steps and no need to have, you know, a sliding glass door that opens into a backyard or something like that. The applicant has architectural solutions for what you're seeing, but I did want to point it out that if you look closely, you are going to see buildings right up against the wetlands, so if you were to step out the back, you know, your building is at the wetland. So, but like I said, that applicant has offered mitigation for that. Conditional use will not affect jointing property values? I don't think it will. The, I'm not sure it's a value. I think Duke Energy might have some questions of how this project's going to affect the use of their easement and maybe the value of their easement. Obviously, normally, we do consider that effect, and we consider the good as well as the bad. The applicant has gone to lengths to explain to me that they're doing a lot of work here, not only to create access for Duke Power, to stabilize some of the way that their machines can get around and do the maintenance they need to do, and they've done everything they can to keep Duke Power happy with regards to how their easement is going to look, how it's going to function, and, you know, the applicant is trying to enhance the value of the easement, not destroy it. But, you know, I don't have a, I neither have a report nor do I have a very strong opinion on whether this easement is going to be adversely impacted or whether it's going to be enhanced. I think I'll kind of let the applicant explain his enhancements for the easement. Moving on. Conditional use will not adversely affect, impact, or exceed the capacity, the fiscal ability of the city to provide adequate public facilities, including transportation, et cetera, et cetera. We'll talk more about this in site plan, but transportation's in good shape, and like I said, we'll talk about more that in the site plan. The utility's there, the city has adopted, TRC has processed their concurrency application, and it passed. They will, you know, we will be able to provide them with what they need. Number seven, conditional use to provide for efficient orderly development, considering the impact of growth patterns and the cost of the city. No, this is, this is a, you know, there's townhomes across the street. This is where we want townhomes, so this is the appropriate place for it, and this is, this furthers, you know, the city's goals of efficient and orderly development. So, I'll get to the staff recommendations on this one, and we recommend approval with a few criteria. You know, keep in mind, we're looking at a phase one and a phase two here, and there are non-conforming lots in both phase one and phase two, and I explained earlier that the purpose of this was to keep the lots out of the road. It's not 100% clear, and there's a lot of information on these plans, and I've worked with the applicant and the engineer for weeks to make the plans more clear. The lots go to the back of the gutter. So, the curb and the sidewalk are in the lots, but the, bless you, but the lots go to the gutter. So, the gutter and the street are going to be separately platted. You can get in there, you can maintain them, you can do whatever you want, and you're not in people's lots. The right-of-way will be platted to include the gutter, the roads. Having said that, you'll see a dotted line there, that's an easement. That easement will allow for the homeowners association and basically their designee to maintain the curb and the sidewalk, which will be on the lots themselves. Like, however, as I said, though, you can see that there will be an easement, and they'll work, they'll work to make sure that that provides full access for maintenance. So, that's, I guess it's a compromise is what you're looking at. Not, not everything is in public or private right-of-way, yet the important things, the streets and the gutter, and gutter includes stormwater facilities, are in the right-of-way without any need for an easement or anything like that. It's just flat-out separately platted. So, staff does recommend approval, contingent, of course, upon approval of site plan 1409. Two, contingent upon approval of Pine Street right-of-way 1433 by Board of Commissioners, because they haven't approved that yet. Third, contingent upon receipt of letter of no objection from Duke Power for lot as well as stormwater facility encroachments into the easement. I would say, and I worded this better in the staff report, for phase two unless stormwater requires, stormwater review requires use of the easement for phase one. Finally, provide a maintenance easement language to have the, and have the language accepted by P&amp;Z prior to vertical construction. I think that's just a given, and we just wanted to make sure that was noted somewhere. I don't know if we want to pause for questions now, or do you want me to go ahead and give the review for 1409 at this point?
I have questions now, sir.
Okay, so, right now, we're going to be talking about the modification of the size, the dimensions, correct?
Yes.
As far as the questions that you want to entertain now, or do you want to entertain all the questions on the site plan as well as...
I think we should limit our questions now to the lot size. I know there's other mitigating factors, but I think we can talk about that later because 1409 talks about those mitigating factors a little bit more. So, I think trying to limit your questions to the lots 1 through 24s, as well as the phase two lots, at this time, would be probably better, and then we can ask more questions when I deliver the review for 1409. So, having said that, do we have any questions about the alternative dimension plan?
I want you to go over that again, because, if I may, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, when this was brought up to us, and I've gone through my notes, it was said that everything would be corrected and everything would be finished when this came back to us. We do not, do we have the letter from Duke Energy?
No, but as I said, staff really feels that that is only necessary for phase two or phase one if phase one requires the easement, use of the easement.
Well, that word "if" bothers me, because we're going to eat that if we don't have it. The second thing was, what about the lot line in the middle of the road to make a lot legal? What happened with that?
We're not doing that anymore. That's the whole point of 1474, is that we no longer have to consider that. It's not a factor.
So, it's out?
Yeah, that's resolved.
I want to hear from our attorney, with these lines going through the lots, 10 years from now, what problems are, is the city going to have with those property owners? We've had problems before in the city with utilities and water retention going on people's lots. What security will we have that we will not have to have any problems, any lawsuits, or anything if that happens in this development? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think I understand your question. I'm certainly obviously reticent to say that the city will never, ever get sued over this application or any other. I want to qualify that, because you simply, I can't see 10 years in the future, neither can you, this...
Well, I understand that. I just want you to say, will, if this is, if this is approved with this going through these lots, is this the end of it? No.
No, but this, in my opinion, presents no more legal risk than is warranted by its nature, I guess, if that's a... There's risk with every application, there's risk with everything that comes before this board and before the Board of Commissioners. Does this, does this application generate legal risk over and above that which attends every development? Not in my opinion.
So, why has it come back to us now if everything isn't rectified and everything answered?
The applicant has addressed every issue that we brought up last time, at length.
No, he hasn't. We don't have the letter from Duke Energy.
No, we do not. And again, the applicant will explain that in that it may not be necessary for phase one, and that it's pretty simple to adopt approval contingent upon getting letter before phase two starts. It's, the applicant felt like that was, and staff agreed that that was a possibility. It's a reasonably simple condition to place upon our approval. Frequently, one thing you have to remember here is in other jurisdictions, you generally do have a preliminary stormwater approval and a final stormwater approval. The point of that is to, if, if the configuration were to change tonight due to your actions, then all the stormwater is going to have to be redone. So, same with landscaping and some other things, you give preliminary approval, and then if the configuration doesn't change, then they work hard and spend engineering dollars to get the final approval. But for them to spend $40,000 or $50,000 on stormwater specifications on a plan that could very well change is something we try to avoid doing to the applicant. We don't want to make them go broke. So, unfortunately, in Tarpon Springs, we don't have a preliminary and final stormwater, so I'm left with a judgment call as to, is this stormwater, you know, ready to move forward, or is it so messed up that honestly, we can't even move forward? In this situation, I think it's clear enough that we have separate basins, and we have a phase one stormwater, and we have the easement for phase two, but I do have to make the qualification that the easement may be, the Duke Power basins may be required for phase one. I don't have a determination on that yet. I think our applicant will say absolutely yes. I'm not an engineer, I'm not going to get between our engineer and their engineer, so I simply made up a good, simple condition that would serve to mark the progress of the stormwater report and issue, you know, permits based upon that condition.
Okay, the other question that I, question is that it may not be the time to discuss it. Did he agree with the city that there'll be no one master meter, that each residence will pay their own bill and we will not have that one meter?
Yes.
He did agree to not do that?
Yes, and I'll let the applicant explain that, but short answer is yes. I just want to, I want to back up a little bit and answer your other question. You also said something about liability. What's a little different here is this is going to be private infrastructure, so it's not the city that's supposed to maintain the curb, gutter, and sidewalk. It's the homeowners association responsibility, so if there's some issue with the easement, these people are going to get mad at their homeowners association, not going to get mad at the city.
Well, we had that at Point Alexis in Harborwatch, and it came back to us, and that's why I was referring to that, because there were quite a few meetings about that and master meter and all that stuff, so that's why I'm asking these questions, so we don't have to embark on that again in the future.
Well, anything is possible, and eventually, yeah, 50 years from now, people could just blame the city if they want.
Well, I won't be here, though.
But this is designed to have private maintenance, and therefore, there's less chance of liability, if I can say that, with a private maintenance situation than with a public maintenance situation.
Did you discuss opening Spruce Street?
Let's save that for application 1409.
That's fine.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and go through this. Do we have any questions about 1474?
But we're not going to have the one meter? That's been...
No, but I'll let the applicant explain any engineering details about how that might work. I don't want to get lost in details. The short answer is no.
Because there were five stipulations that they agreed to come back and...
Yes. Yes. So, looking at 1409, again, it's a 95-lot subdivision, you got a phase one, you got a phase two. Again, the background's the same as I read for the previous one. We've given or are working on, you know, basically five separate applications to put this plan together. To graduate the site plan review, as you do know, we went through, and I listed a number deficiencies at the last meeting. We feel like that 99% of those have been met. The only qualification I'll give on that one is, we don't have a lighting plan, they're not required to have one.
A lighting plan?
Lighting plan. They're not required to have lighting, so they don't have to submit one. I think they may come back at a later... I think they may come back at a later date with the lighting plan, but right now they're not required to have one and they don't have one. That's, that's kind of the only reason. With regards to signage, you know, they've made notes and that's one of the sheets you received, last minute sheet three you received, there's a note on there saying, yeah, they're, they will follow the sign code. And that's typical sometimes in a larger project where in, A, instead of including every sign, they, they have notes saying, we will have the, you know, no speeding sign. We have the access signs right. We will have a lot of these smaller signs that, that work for the, the details of how the, how the parking's going to work, the handicaps, accessibility, all that stuff. And B, their sign is tied into their public art requirement. So they're, they're working on that and they simply made a note saying, yeah, we're going to meet, we've done the calculations, we know how much money we need to spend and we know what's required of us and we are going to meet the public art and the sign requirements all at the same time and staff's perfectly fine with that. I would rather them take their time and do it right than try to, to put something together now that's going to change. And typically, public art is handled sort of last in the process. Looking at comprehensive plan of future land use element, yeah, they're, they're discouraging sprawl because they're, they're doing compact development in a compact development part of the city. It's, it's an appropriate place to put what they're, what they're placing, utilizes existing infrastructure and provides housing. Like I said, city's growing. We need to be able to house new population. Concurrent and level service analysis, they were given their certificate of concurrency. Transportation in particular, I guess this is a good time to bring up Spruce Street. First of all, they meet their transportation requirements and that is due to a large part that there was a, you know, a turn lane and a light put in at the intersection of Jasmine and Tarpon and it works just fine. I mean, I've done it a number of times myself, posting signs out there. It's a well-designed intersection. There, there may be some congestion in the morning, but there, a lot of places in the city do have some suggestions and they have a transportation impact statement to back up that says their level of service will be acceptable. You know, I think without that light, we could really be sitting here scratching our heads going, how the heck is this going to work? The light is there. Improvements have been made. The second part of that, of course, is Spruce Street. You know, part of my job is to, somebody used the word shepherd earlier. Part of my job is to shepherd these projects through and right now mixing Spruce Street with this project, I think, has the potential to make this more complicated than it needs to be. First of all, because the city has not given us a clear direction where they want to build Spruce Street. You know, if I had an order from the Board of Commissioners or the mayor's office or even my city manager saying, we've committed, we're going to do it, then yeah, we need to, I, I think this, this plan needs to address Spruce Street and what it's going to look like and how it's going to affect and, and all that sort of thing. Right now, this plan is written such that it could accommodate Spruce Street, it stubs out Spruce Street. They've built in drain, extra drainage to, to handle the runoff from Spruce Street. So the applicant has done his job and he's ready to accommodate it, but staff has not asked the applicant to, to design for a project that has not even been approved by the city. So despite whether, whether we think Spruce Street is a good idea or not, I would just simply caution that if we mix these issues too much, we kind of run the risk of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. So yes, Spruce Street would be good. B, not only is it going to complicate our site plan, it's going to comp, it has already complicated the stormwater and plan and that's another reason we don't have as clear of a stormwater picture as we would like to because Spruce Street has in fact muddled the issue. That's why I think a carefully worded condition is really the way to proceed with regards to stormwater. And frankly, the conditions don't address Spruce Street because it would be premature for staff to make any sort of Spruce Street recommendations at this point until, until, you know, staff gets direction from the city. So that's my comments on transportation. Art design standards, I've, I've discussed that. They are going to meet their commitments. So now we get to the staff recommendation. Again, I'll just repeat that we have a, we have an oddly configured site and we are, we are having to do a number of things to, to basically get double loaded streets is kind of what it boils down to. We're going to have some constraints here. You know, what are, what are these townhomes going to, how are they going to function up against the wetland? You know, what, how exactly is that going to be mitigated? Given everything that we've done, we have made a lot of progress towards making this You know, it, it says on the staff report, although this configuration technically meets the density requirements, there will be an impact on massing and appearance. It's going to, it's definitely going to look a little crowded, but that's because there's a pond in the middle of this project. And again, I'll, you know, it reiterates the idea that you're not going to have a yard for some of these. If you do have a yard, you're not going to be able to physically step into it if there's a wetland there. So that's, I, I guess that's a compromise of the plan. So staff does recommend approval contingent upon, you know, the approval of the other applications that are outstanding. Contingent upon, again, a letter of no objection from Duke Power for phase two to begin or for phase one to begin if phase one requires the use of the easement or the use of the, the power easement for stormwater. It's that simple. You know, phase two to begin within five years. We talked about a timeframe. We agree upon five years, sounds reasonable. Subject to completion of all required road and utility improvements to make each phase self-sustaining. And I, I guess I didn't word that as well as I could have, but that's, that's the gist of number five. And the plan does do that. I'm not putting that in there because that's a deficiency. That condition is only in there because my engineers simply wanted written in plain language that two years from now, when we're installing infrastructure and there's some discussion as to how much infrastructure or whether this can be, line can be run in this direction or that direction, that it's somewhere in plain English, it says each phase has to have its own infrastructure in order to begin construction. They simply insisted that I put a simple statement in there that says exactly that. Number six is subject to removal of structures of, such as the clubhouse and all the other uses that are in phase two prior to commencement of phase two. I think that's, that's kind of common sense. Contingent upon approval of stormwater plan. Again, normally we have preliminary approval and final approval. Tarpon Springs doesn't have that. So what, what generally happens and to make all this work is our building department allow, is going to allow phase one to begin and to, while they're, they're getting all, any final details together and this happens with all projects, there's always final details. They allow them to build one model building and that gets them in there, that gives them something to show, something to sell, but they're not going to be able to build any other buildings until everything is satisfied. The engineers are happy till, till the landscape plan is, is, is completely fleshed out. Landscape plan is the exact same as stormwater. If we had them do $50,000 now and you change the configuration tonight, they're going to have to spend another $50,000. So the landscape plan, just since I'm talking about it, is adequate. We've gone over the requirements. They do meet the requirements of the code. We'll have to go back and double check to make sure all the dead trees are indeed dead. And then he has, he's provided illustrative example of what the trees on the lots are going to look like, what the trees around the clubhouse are going to look like. Staff satisfied with the landscaping. So, I'm sorry, eight is the contingent upon utilities and structure, infrastructure to be completely self-sufficient, not five. Five and eight are related. And nine, finally, like I just said, contingent upon final landscaping plan approval. Again, he meets the code. He promises to put the mitigation required for each tree removed. We just simply need to go out and tie ribbons around trees and poke them and make sure they're dead, you know, get a harbinger out there and make sure we all, we're all looking at the same tree and same species and the same condition of those. And that's a, that's typical. So like I said, there's going to be checks and balances along the way and that's my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Langen. Any questions for the staff? Start St. Arnold?
No.
Mr. Carr?
Can you just clarify, you said there's project one and project two?
Phase one and phase two.
Yeah, the phase one and phase two. Is this just phase one we're looking at right now?
No, the applicant wants you to consider both phases and that's, that's why the, the contingency is in there that as long as they have their infrastructure in place, they should be able to begin the phase.
And what, can you explain to me then on, just looking at exhibit one and two, I've just been looking at the, the maps, it looks like the property runs straight to 19. Is that in the, the plans that we have or is that part of the plans we have or not?
The, the parcel does. I might've gotten that parcel wrong. Parcel does, but no, that industrial land. I'm going to let the applicant answer that because sometimes we have inconsistencies between the tax assessor site and the GIS and the zoning map. When you start putting all the maps together, sometimes you do have an error. But the site, the project itself will go to the LC, see the LC green on exhibit three?
Yeah.
That is, you know, conservation area he's not going to get into. So for all intensive purposes, that's the edge of the project is that LC. Project is not going to go to 19. It's not going to happen. There's stuff in the way. So, no.
You can't.
Just a, a question. I was at the last meeting, you guys reviewed part of this. What is the situation with East Pine Street? I mean, it's showing on the map, but is that still has to do with the, the type of land in between 19 and the project or?
It's, it bisects a project and, and it keeps the north and south from being able to be contiguous. It's not in the city's long-range transportation plan in, in any way. There's a very detailed analysis of exactly how much is going to be abandoned, what it's going to cost, what it's going to look like. The meets and bounds were done, the surveys were done. So it's, you know, there's, there's planning commission recommended approval and P&amp;Z board, I'm sorry, recommended approval and it's, it's absolutely necessary for the project and I, pretty clean, there's no outstanding issues with that.
So is that just the city's giving easement to the project developer then for that Pine Street?
We're, we're going to accept money for that, yes.
Okay, that's what I just want to confirm.
Absolutely. They're going to settle it just the way anyone else would settle a vacation right away.
I want to confirm that.
Yes.
Thanks. With the landscape plan with this, it shows, it just shows like tree, shrub, shrub, tree, grass. Is that typical for approval? That just seems pretty vague to me.
Uh, it is vague, but that's the way the code is written. When you, when you read this code back and forward, it, it's actually, if you're not building, you know, commercial parking lots, there's not a whole lot of tree shrub detail in there. When you're just doing residential, it really boils down to a simple table that, given a certain lot size, in this case, a smaller lot size, for every tree you cut down, you have to replace two, period. The only other part that, that applies to this project is, you know, if, if there's a buffer or if there's a wetland, you, you know, you need to put some trees to try and screen the buffer or wetland. So those are the only two requirements and we came upon an agreement to where all the trees that they're going to have to, they're going to have to cut down some. All the trees that they're going to have to replace, you know, at two to one are first going to satisfy two trees per lot at a minimum. Then anything left over is going to go around the, go around the wetland. So it was a sort of a measured logical approach towards what do we do with a number of trees?
So what happens when you have like a lot then that doesn't have any yard space?
The lot will have enough yard space for two trees.
For two trees it will?
As a matter of fact, they, they, they would like to do more than the minimum. You know, the applicant has expressed that we'll put this down as the minimum, but we could absolutely, you know, we don't want to sell a bare lot. We don't, we want the customer to drive up to the building and if trees makes that customer happy, they're going to plant the extra trees. So they're, they're in this to, you know, from a business point of view to maximize the landscaping. I just, I could not ask them to do more than the minimum of the code.
No, I'm not asking that either.
Okay. There, there's enough room for two trees per lot.
Okay. With the, has there been discussion on the floor height? I mean, the level built compared to the wetlands itself, because it seems like there's going to be a few properties built in the wetlands. Has there been a discussion on where the minimum floor is going to be for those?
Height as in elevation?
Yeah.
As in, well, there's not a flood plain here, so.
So it-
Just it's going to come down to an engineering groundwater sort of footing situation if it's, you know, your, your water table's going to be pretty high next to this wetland, so.
Right, well, that's what I mean, discussion is, I would, I don't know, I'm not an insurance person, but flood wise?
Their engineer may be able to answer that. You know, that's, that's a good question. It's like how's, how's the elevation going to be compared to the, the wetlands? So I can't really answer that.
Okay. And then with the aspect of building, part of a building in the wetlands is, you don't see a compromise of the structure of concern?
Well, first of all, there's no building in the wetlands, just, just to clarify, it's not-
Is this the lot line then? I mean, my understanding was-
Lot line is, lot line is in the wetland.
Because we-
The building is in the wetland buffer.
Yeah, this is US.
Okay, okay.
And the building physically is adjacent to the wetland.
Gotcha. Thank you. No further questions. Thanks.
Mr. Haas?
No idea.
None at this time, no. Mr. Potus?
No.
And I suppose now we're ready to hear from the applicant?
Mm-hmm.
If there's no other questions for staff?
This is too much. I'll leave that for you. I'll take the rest of my stuff.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Bill Conrad, 3617 Town Avenue, Newport Ritchie, Florida, and, excuse me, the agent for the owner, Mr. Lindiakas, and we have the owner here tonight and we have our engineer here tonight to answer some questions. And so I've been carefully listening to staff's report and, you know, we concur with staff, with staff's recommendation to move forward. Historically, looking back, if you remember the last meeting, we continued because we wanted to take the time with staff to fully address the issues and, you know, to guarantee that this project would move forward. And starting with, I think just as a general statement, staff has basically said, look, we're 99% happy with everything that's there and satisfied. There's a 1% out there still that is, is a potential area that still has to be refined. To that, I would just say that there are conditions and those conditions are part of the approval and those conditions are going to guide and control this process to ensure that that 1% is satisfied. And I think that, that, that that's accurate. So assuming that, I think also there comes a time where I think as, as a board, you know, you have to also rely on your staff, on their hard work and they've done an excellent job, by the way. This is not necessarily an easy site, but you know, there are issues, environmental issues that we had to comply with and, and we, we had. Beginning with the concept, and I'll just go over briefly the, some of the key points and then we'll get into the details and we hope to satisfy you and address the questions because I know there are going to be questions. That's why we have our, our engineer here. When we started this process, we began with Renee and we went through the process, we did, and, and went over the design. We, there was a fundamental decision made and has been continued that as far as the design goes to satisfy the lot requirements, that what we would, initially, we looked at the option of placing the lot in the middle of the road, which is, given the fact that this is not a public subdivision, given the fact that this is a private development, that that would be acceptable. The decision was made for a lot of reasons and of course, staff today has come up with the same conclusion that it, it, it makes a whole lot more sense and we have to use common sense in these, in, in these proceedings. It makes a whole lot more sense just to deal with a minimal dimension, go ahead, provide some relief on the lots that basically abut the wetland areas. So you have to remember when you have a lot, you have a wetland area that's behind it. Now, the one thing that I also want to make clear and our engineer will confirm this is that we've, we've taken this through Southwest Florida Water Management District. They're the body with principal authority to review and approve site plans with respect to wetlands with- to review and approve site plans with respect to wetlands, with respect to retention, with respect to runoff and all of those issues. Our engineer will confirm that. One of the things that we're required to provide, when you look at that line, is we provide a twenty-five foot buffer before we hit the wetlands. So when you look at those lots, you have to keep in mind there's twenty-five feet of buffer and then the wetland. All right? And so that, that is a consideration. And furthermore, from a design point of view, we obviously, it's the developer that's taking the risk and I don't think the developer would wanna do anything that would jeopardize the second, the success and the marketing of these lots. So it would behoove him to do things that are going to be workable and saleable, so. So, and that was the, that was the underlying rationale for the, the, the dimension, minimal dimension. As far as the balance of the issues with the site plan, um, I think through all the different meetings, we've addressed those. I think there's a comfort level, a ninety-nine percent comfort level, and we're, uh, more than ready, willing, we're, we're gonna be required and we will satisfy the balance because we have to satisfy those two to move forward. So basically, with that general overview now, uh, we'd be pleased to, uh, answer any specific questions that you have. And that's why we have our engineer here and, uh, the owner.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Other questions from the board for, uh, the applicant? Oh. Sure.
Hi, my name's Manuel Lindiakas. I live at seven-seven-three Ainslet Landings Drive, Tarpon Springs, Florida. And, uh, as we discussed before, um, we've been back and forth with the city. We satisfied all the requirements. This, this first issue with the non-conforming lots, uh, was at their request, uh, which we've sat, we, we went, we went ahead and we redesigned the plan at their request to move it behind the curb instead of putting it in the road, which legally we could put it in the road and satisfy the hundred feet. Okay? The minimum lot size, we're still satisfying that. We're not asked, we're still, the minimum lot size is two thousand square feet. None of the, none of the townhome lots are less than two thousand square feet. Uh, I think there's some confusion here as far as us building into the wetland. None of the buildings go into the wetlands. They, the closest they get at, on some of the lots is at that twenty-five foot buffer setback. So when, when they're saying that we're building in the wetlands, we're doing, we're not building in the wetlands. The other thing that I think it's important is, uh, and he can come up here and address it. Uh, we, we've had SWIFTMUD approval since August. All the stormwater calculations have been done. So that's been addressed and, and that's a final approval. That's not a preliminary stormwater design. That's a final approval from SWIFTMUD for phase one and phase two. Ri- Richard to get up here and tell you that phase one operates separately from phase two, so uh, the retention for phase one is satisfied in its retention pond and then phase two is gonna be in its own retention pond. So there's no confusion. He'll get up there and confirm that. So, uh, we're here to answer any questions. Well, you know, we feel we've got a complete set of plans. We've been through this with everybody. Uh, as far as the lots that go up to the, to the buffer not having a yard, you know, there's, there's no room from a yard because we have to elevate that about three feet. And that's why we went ahead and designed the outside sitting area, the porches, within the envelope. Okay, so you'll be able to go outside. And the other thing that, that I'd like to note is that twenty-five foot buffer that goes around the five acre pond is gonna be made into a nature trail. And then it's gonna extend around the other nature trail in phase two. And also there's gonna be a little walking path around the retention pond on phase two, uh, for the, for the community. So, you know, this, this project is, is eighteen acres. It's not three acres. You follow me? So, yeah, there's a few lots where the people won't have a yard in their backyard, but they'll be able to go outside and walk into that buffer and walk their dogs and I'm gonna put benches in there and nature and, you know, because it, that Cypress Head's a beautiful, a beautiful thing. And if you ask me, having the Cypress Head in my porch is, those are probably the pre, the most premier lots there to have that thing in your backyard where you wake up and there's eagles in there and eegrets and everything else. So, yeah, we don't have a per se backyard where you can get out and walk on some of the lots, but there's gonna be a, a community nature trail that goes almost ten acres all the way around the property, which is a pretty unique, unique thing for the people that live there. Not to mention, uh, the clubhouse, which is gonna have all the amenities as well. So, you know, you know, we, we really appreciate everybody getting on board. I mean, we've been working with them for six months. You know, like I said, this thing was supposed to be at this point back in August, but the city had problems and, you know, I've been bearing it and, you know, white knuckling this thing for six or seven months now, but it looks like everybody's up to speed on it. We've, we've satisfied everybody's concerns. Uh, and we just wanna get started, so. If you can please follow the staff's recommendation, that's all we ask. And I'll turn it over to Richard, the engineer.
Hi, my name is Richard Kelly, eighty-nine-ten Tennis Court, Newport Ritchie. I'm here to answer any questions, some, as the civil engineer on the project. Uh, just a few clarifications, because I heard some concerns earlier about, um, future maintenance of the road and sidewalk. It's set up to where there's two tracks. There's track A and track B. Track A contains the road and the gutters maintained by the HOA. Track B is from the gutters to the sidewalks and then five foot beyond for maintenance of the sidewalk and allowance for private utilities, cable, phone, things like that. Both tracks are dedicated to the HOA. Uh, easement law also provides a stipulation that, that if the HOA goes defunct or just doesn't do their job, that the municipality has absolute right to come in there and take care of that maintenance. So that should head off any issues now and in the future. Uh, as far as the ponds go, um, what Manuel said, SWIFTMUD did approve, um, with the concern that, that one and two were separate as far as stormwater and utilities and everything, and they are completely independent from another. That's why we ended up getting the SWIFTMUD permit was to ensure that they were both separate. Um, so I'll take any other questions you may have.
What about the water meters now? What if y'all?
Yeah, they're all separate meters. There's, there's no master meter, each, each individual meter, yes.
If this board, and it may not fly, chose to send a, a statement to the Board of Commissioners tomorrow night that the city and the developer needs to open up, uh, Spruce Street because of congestion on Tarpon Avenue around, as you come out from the road there in the cemetery, which Spruce Street now has a light, would y'all have a, a problem with working with the city on opening Spruce Street? For safety factor and, uh, and congestion factor?
I'll let the owner speak to that.
Yeah.
First of all, uh, we, we've done a traffic study that's been done by a professional engineer and, and the existing conditions can sustain the ninety-five units. I would, would say that and I think Mr. Josh reaffirmed that. Bringing Spruce Street into this thing i- is, is, uh, at this point, is gonna muddy the waters because I, I sort of like wanna, need to get started. But I will say this, we designed our ponds, our pond is, in phase two, is overdesigned and it accommodates all of Spruce Street, including the vault and including all the runoff from Spruce Street. Okay? But, uh, we haven't reached any kind of concessions on me doing that for the city, but I'm, I'm ready and willing to do what's fair and reasonable. I brought that up at the commission meeting. Now that brings another good point that, that, uh, because this, this condition that the city wants to put on me with, with the stormwater easement with Duke, okay, uh, which we, we'll probably talk about it later, but that's why we probably should leave it out now. But I, I could tell you this, we've got all of that volume designed in that pond. Okay, as long as we can reach some kind of agreement with the city. If we don't put Spruce Street in there, that pond that you see on phase two will be cut in half. I don't need to make it that big, but we made it that big. I don't know how many cubic feet of runoff we're taking on. That vault, we think, was seventy thousand cubic feet because we gotta hold the engineer that designed that vault. And then what we did is we did a preliminary di- design of Spruce Street and we put all that volume in there. But like, like I said, uh, I'm ready to do what's reasonable and fair, because I'd love to have Spruce Street go through. Okay, it's in the city's court to do that. The good news is I've got the pond volume there to do it. Otherwise, the city would have to put a pond on the other side of Carl Flamer Ford and run about seven hundred foot of pipe. It'd probably cost you who knows what. It'd be a lot cheaper to just put it with me. But this condition that they're putting in there with this Duke thing could throw a wrench into that because, uh, first of all, Duke has an easement there. They don't have a, I own the property. They don't have a right of way there. Okay? And there's nothing in, in the city's governing rules, if you read through your development review stuff, that says you can place restrictions like that on a landowner. Make him get permission from an easement holder to, to re, regrade my property. In essence, that's what all I have to do there is regrade that part of the property to, to sustain the runoff from my project and all the spruce. Okay? I don't think there's nothing in the, in the city that says that y'all can do that to me, but I'm not, I'm gonna agree to it. I've already contacted Duke and we're trying to work things out with them. But, uh, if they're unreasonable, then the city might get left out on that part. You follow me? So I think that's something later. But I don't think that there's anything in the code that says you can make a landowner get permission from an easement holder to grade his property. You follow me? In fact, if you read under the stormwater retention, it says that your intent and your purpose in the code is to help, help a developer reasonably develop his property, not put constraints on there that, that are, uh, and if, and, and the other part in the code there, it says that you're not allowed to restrict somebody from, uh, from contractual relation, on their own personal contractor, contractual relationship, but that's what that easement creates. It creates a, an issue with the landowner and the easement holder. Okay? So that's gonna be a little complicated. If you left it out, it'd be better, but if you leave it in, I'm gonna work it out with Duke. And, and when he was saying about how we're gonna make it better for them, we're gonna make it better for them because now they're gonna have a flat surface to drive around and get to their, get to their lines. So, you know, we're, we're ready and willing to, to help the city put Spruce Street in there. I mean, we've planned that ahead. So now we're just waiting for the city to say, hey, let's sit down, let's figure out, let's do it. But the, the good news is I can put it all in there if we can work it out. You follow me? Okay.
Well, just so you understand, I think it's our responsibility. Also, the city's responsibility, when there's a development with a developer, to work out to open every street possible and make it easy for the residents of the development you have and for the safety factor of the whole community. And the road that they've just finished now has been congested for the last five days and through the holidays. Unbelievable. So anything that we can open, which we lost out on one last two weeks ago, is proving to be a detriment in the future for neighborhoods and for the people who live in the area. But that's my only, uh, thing that I'm interested in. I don't know whether the rest of the board is or not because there's a light there now on nineteen. It'll be easy for people to, to get in and out of your development if it's open. And I have a question to ask the board after the vote is taken and they may not wanna do it, so.
Well, I, I think we, we've talked to the planning department. We talked to, uh, I, after that meeting, I went ahead and told them that it sounds like the, the commissioners got the money. They wanna do this. And plus, while we're out there, we could probably get it done cheaper because we're gonna have the tractors out there and all this other stuff. And we probably could do it for less than two fifty, so they won't have to get a public, uh, send it out to public bid. So when I talked to, uh, Karen, uh, I don't know if she talked to Mark, but we, what we agreed to is, is it's gonna make it, we, we don't wanna tie that with this. Let us get started with this and then we can work on that. You follow me?
Well, the money's there to do it.
But the good news is, I've got SWIFTMUD approval to take on all the, all of the water for that, so that, that's a plus.
That's right. So in short, we're ready, willing and able. Just waiting for the city to give us the go-ahead and, uh, we'll include that, call it phase two A, if you will. Uh, we'll provide a proposal and get cost estimate. Well, I think the city's consulting stormwater engineers is putting together a construction cost for that. So then we can move forward.
Any other questions for the applicant? Uh-huh. Ms. Potus, any further questions? Mr. Haas?
No, sir.
Mr. Carr?
I just have a question based on what you talked about if, because you said the, the pond size was designed to take on the, if Spruce is built, but then if it's not, it'll be reduced. So as a plan, it's designed right now to be the big pond. We're approving that as part of the plan, so what happens if that? And then is it, Spruce isn't done, but it's approved in the plan, what falls in that for the developer? I don't know if that's a city question or?
Well, well, because this is done in phases, um, I don't think we're gonna be starting phase, uh, phase two within the next six months to a year. I mean, it's gonna take me four months to get the roads in for phase one and, and I think the city's ready to start Spruce Street in the next six months to a year. So it, I think we can agree to something. You follow me?
No, the city's not.
Okay.
I'd, my answer is I'd say there's no way we can attempt to reduce the pond in any way because of speculation that, that's not having spruce will somehow require less. I don't have the full stormwater plan approved yet, so there's no way I can recommend reducing. I, I say we look at it and take it for what it is and stick with what's on the plan.
Yeah, I was, that's what, I mean, I, I saw what was on the plan and we talked about that and it's-
Yeah, we won't confuse things by that. We'll just leave it as is, you know, phase one and then phase two becomes phase two and-
Can you just, uh, the next question I have, looking at the, the pond and the twenty-five foot easement of the wetland, or twenty-five feet of, um,
Upper buffer.
Buffer of the wetland.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at the lot. Is the, can you just define the line for me of what, what I'm actually looking at as the buffer and which one's the, the pond itself?
Can I approach?
Yeah, come on over.
The, uh-
This is the actual, uh-
Yeah, I'm kinda curious.
If you're, you're looking at sheet one, the heavier line with all the L, L designations-
And then the only place that we did have to encroach was these three lots here. Out of all the ones, these are the only ones that come up.
This is the twenty-five foot setback here.
Right, this, these are the only three that's already been approved and come to the wetland line. The rest of them just go to the, to the seventy-five foot buffer line.
Okay, so the buffer is to the maximum then?
Yeah, the, the innermost line is the wetland and then the offset of that is the buffer.
It was either you guys or some other board that let us do that. I, I increased the buffer area all around the size. I made it like, we only had to go in like, I don't know the exact square footage, but say it was six hundred square feet that we encroached. I gave y'all back almost five thousand square feet by making it bigger all the way around here. Okay?
Yeah, see, yeah.
That was another stipulation from SWIFTMUD is the, the buffer that we encroached, we had to compensate for that in other places. So we've, we've overplanted and, and increased buffers in places where we could to compensate for any encroachments.
This is going to be a crowded development in there. We've really put a lot of residents in here.
That's the zoning, isn't it?
You know, it's a, it's a typical townhome development.
I mean, you look at the picture-
Your, your requirement is a hundred foot lots and some of them, uh, very few of them will be as little as ninety and a half. So we're, we're cutting nine and a half feet out of some of the lots, but, um, it's a typical townhome subdivision.
I would say that, that, uh, we've got zoning of ten units per acre. We've got twelve buildable acres plus a credit for the wetland area. So if we really wanted to cram them in there, we could've put about a hundred and thirty units. So we're, we're twenty-five percent less than that. And again, the, the reason that they're, they look crowded is because that's the only place we could put them. We had a five acre wetland to contend with and that hundred and sixty foot easement to contend with. Um, but I'd like to just keep in mind that we are giving the, the residents there access to the whole eighteen acres. They're gonna have a nature trail that goes around both phases, around the retention pond by the cemetery. That's gonna be a walking area, jogging path, dog walk, you know, uh, and then that other area right on Spru- Jasmine there, that's not a retention pond. I'm gonna make that like a real, like a real, uh, manicured, uh, nature, you know, manicured garden. garden, maybe a putting green or something, or, you know, really nice place where you can go sit. So even though those are a little crowded there, the people there are gonna have more room than most people, you know, in some of these places. But that's the only way we can make it work. I mean, I wish...if I didn't have that easement, I would've put everything over there, but...
Well, it's just nice to see a hometown young man making it and being able to do something like this.
Mr. Carr, you have more questions?
I congratulate you, but it still bothers me.
Just got one more question about Pond Two closer to the cemetery. What's the runoff for those aspects? Because I know, I think it says Pond Two right here, and it's butts up to the cemetery, I believe. So what...how does that runoff and where does that actually drain to, or is the pond just perk itself and then go onto?
No, the pond is connected, if you look at Sheet...I believe it's five or six. Pond Two is connected back to the wetland.
Okay.
So where all the development goes to the other Pond One or Pond Two, that runoff gets directed back to the wetland. So it doesn't ever dry out, it keeps hydrated, and it doesn't change its elevation from what it currently is, so.
Okay. And there's safety fails, I guess, that it wouldn't like overflow and flood out the cemetery?
No, no, it's designed to meet the hundred-year storm.
Okay.
So it reaches that elevation in the current condition and it'll reach the same elevation in the proposed condition.
Okay. That's all my questions I have. Thank you.
Ms. St. Arnold?
No, thank you.
Any other questions, the board? Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Seeing none? The public portion is closed.
Okay.
It's time now for the board to...there's two applications. We'll obviously take the first one first and then the second one. The first one is for the...
Is there clarification? Sorry?
Can I just see...can we ask about clarification with the attorney, city attorney and the city staff? When the applicant mentioned something along the lines of the easement from Progress Energy and that it's not required by the code that he has to have ample approval by the easement holder, I mean, is that something we need to be aware of before we move forward with this and make a motion or...
You've got some recommendations as to contingencies and conditions on the application. This is fourteen-seventy-four for the Alternative Dimension Plan, one of which concerns the easement. It's my understanding, based on what I've heard today and my knowledge of the application, that Duke Energy's objection to this, or objection to encroachment into their easement potentially compromises the stormwater plan. And for that reason, it would go directly to one of the elements that you're looking at in terms of the conditional use. So I believe it is embedded within the code in order for you to evaluate that condition, and it is permissible to attach that condition to the application.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'd like whoever makes any motions to be specific about any contingencies or conditions of the motion. There's been a lot of discussion about that.
You know, Mr. Lang, I mentioned at the outset that he might reword the staff report relative to Condition Three under Duke Energy's easement, and so I would suggest that you consult him in making a motion for the precise wording of that condition so that it's clear on the record.
For number three, this under the staff recommendation you're...
Correct, and I would suggest further that the motion, if this is the motion, I'm not suggesting that it is or should be, only that if the motion is to approve and to adopt the conditions set forth by the staff report, that that be made clear within the motion.
To be specific, I would use Condition Three from fourteen-oh-nine instead of Condition Three from fourteen-seventy-four. It's worded much better.
So the floor's open for a motion?
The motion is to approve one or both?
It's one.
Taking one. The first one we're talking is fourteen-seventy-four.
Fourteen-seventy-four.
I'll move to make a motion to approve fourteen-seventy-four with the replacement of number three of fourteen-seventy-four with fourteen-oh-nine.
With number three and fourteen-oh-nine.
From fourteen-oh-nine and then contingent that fourteen-oh-nine is also passed and approved.
All right, to be clear on the motion, are you...the conditions of approval, the four conditions of approval as amended are intended to be included within the motion? All of the conditions? There are four stated in the staff report. You've replaced one with the condition from the other staff report on the other application. Is your motion intended to encapsulate all of those conditions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion by the board? This is on the dimensional application only. Seeing none, we'll call vote, please.
Ms. Protos?
Yes. With the conditions.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Hossi?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, the floor's now open for a motion concerning application fourteen-zero-nine, site plan for Cypress Trails and Tarpon Springs.
Excuse me, just so I'm clear, this is the one that we're saying is contingent upon number three, correct, on the...
All the conditions are worded correctly on this one.
Yes.
Okay. It's just that these...condition number three or contingency number three from this one that we're looking at now was grafted on to the one before.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept application fourteen-zero-nine with the conditions that are here by staff recommendation.
Well, nine conditions. All nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application with the nine conditions in the staff report.
Ms. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Hossi?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question of the board if they so pleased to do it. Along with these two applications that will be going to the commissioners, I think, tomorrow night, right?
No, we...yeah, postponed it for two weeks to give him enough time.
Okay. Would the board agree to send a statement to the commission that because they have the funding and the financing ready, that Spruce Street needs to be opened during the...while they are starting on this first phase for safety, safety for the residents there to have another access to a road and for...to eliminate heavy congestion on the Tarpon Avenue. There's a light there already.
Right.
Half the road is there already. They just have to use their money that they have to go ahead and do it. That's up to the board, the rest of you, if you want to do that. We can send...I was told that we can send recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on items that come before us.
Okay. Do you want to make that as a motion and then we'll see if there's a second and then...
I'd like to make a motion that we send a statement to, or whatever you want to call it, a statement to the Board of Commissioners that the city, working with the developer, open up Spruce Street for another access for the residents of this development to have for entering and exiting the development because there's already a light at nineteen on Spruce and half of it is already developed.
Okay. So second to the motion?
He's smiling. We can't do that.
Well, whether you can or can't, I'm gonna comment on it briefly just because I can't help myself. To be clear, you are permitted to make recommendations to the board on applications that come before you. Now, technically, you've already voted on the application that came before you on Mr. Lindiakos's development.
Technically what?
I wondered. We already voted.
Yeah, you already voted on the application before you, so technically, and I don't want to be too pedantic about it, but it is from a legal perspective, you're making a recommendation that it's independent of any application. Your code doesn't specifically give you that power. I think you can make the argument that this is tangentially related to this development, but I think it should be put on the record at least that the opening of Spruce Street or anything to do with Spruce Street is not a condition of approval of the prior applications.
I'm not telling them they have to do it. I want to make a recommendation that they look at it, consider it, and do it at this time. I can't tell them they have to do it. That's up to the commissioners. But, you know, some of them may not think about it, and I think it's a good recommendation from the planning and zoning since we've been through all of this before they have. Look at it.
I think it's clear. We understand that they're not required to put Spruce Street, open it up at the same time, but it's a recommendation that's being proposed. Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, I would second that. I mean, the safety aspect would be a question, too, at some aspect with cars going through, cutting through, avoiding the lights, but yeah, I would second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We'll call.
Ms. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Hossi?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
And Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know how you're gonna write it up and send it to them, but I want to come and read it before you do it. Let me know, Josh, or the attorney, how you're writing up that recommendation.
Discussion items is the next item on the agenda. Josh?
Congratulations, guys.
Good luck.
This will be extremely brief. City Clerk's office has contacted our office and we had a meeting just last week, Friday as a matter of fact. They've been tasked to go through all of the rules and procedures for all the boards and make sure that the rules and procedures match the code and make sure that the rules and procedures are somewhat similar between the boards themselves and not widely varied. So they've given us some preliminary information and we're gonna work on that a little bit more and we'll get back to you in the future with any recommendations we have for rules and procedures for this board.
Okay. Thank you. We'll look forward to that.
Are all of you provided with a copy of the rules and procedures when you were appointed to the board?
Yep.
Yes.
I was wondering the same thing. I'm glad to know that. Next item is staff comments. Josh?
I want to thank for the board for their patience. This, as you know, has been a particularly difficult project, Cypress Trails is what I'm referring to. Not everything looks on as smoothly as it could've, but I assure you that staff has worked extremely hard in this last month or two to get this development on track. When I say extremely hard, I mean working after hours, five calls a day, every day to these engineers. Tell the engineer what they want to do. They say, okay, send it back, it's not a hundred percent. I send it back to the engineer and say, do it exactly the way I told you to do it, and send it back to me. So what you see before you is something that staff has worked very hard on, and I want to just kind of let you know that, and I want to thank you for your patience.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much, Josh.
I mean, that this is a planning and zoning board, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how to state this. This may turn out to be the best development in Tarpon, but it looks very, very congested. It looks like it's just pushed together from the area photos and the maps that we've gotten. He's allowed that in the zoning. I'm hoping in the future that the Board of Commissioners will take a look at the zonings again. And I stated this in front of manual before here when I came to get some clarification from the help from Mr. Haley and the Planning and Zoning Board. I'm afraid something this congested in the future will turn out to be undesirable. I hate to use that word, but you see some developments in the county where it's very, very congested and it gets run down. I don't know that we can do anything, or if we can, the city attorney can correct me if I'm saying it right, where we ask the city to look at what they allow in their zoning-ish areas so this...you don't get this congested. See, I like green space, but when you get too many, you see developments around, you get too many homes close together, they start to go down. And this bothers me with this one. And it may very well...I may eat those words because it may be one of the best developments in Tarpon.
Well, we hope it turns out to be good. But there is talking about the infill development. I think there's a trend needed to have smaller lots closer in and make it...rather than the sprawl that we've been doing in the last thirty or forty years in Florida, to try to condense it more and especially in the cities, make it a little bit more condensed and at a different scale.
I think the backyards are gonna be a problem. I think some people don't want a backyard.
Exactly. I know a lot of people don't want a yard.
So I mean, I think those will sell just as easily as the other ones.
I think those will sell first.
Yeah.
The ones that back up to that wetland.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we share your concern, I think all of us do, that every project that comes before us, that we really hope that succeeds and will be a credit to the community.
The brief answer to your question is yes. I mean, you all said as the city's LPA and Planning and Zoning Board, so you have the ability to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding amendments to the comp plan and zoning code, et cetera. You know, what are those to do with?
And it may just be the aerial photo that's doing it to me. I just see tightness and...
We would like to see something done with the lighting, outdoor lighting ordinance developed, as we've mentioned before when you first came on, Josh. I know that's a lot of work, but that's something that board...this board has been concerned.
What are you working at in lighting, Mr. Chairman?
Dark sky ordinance?
To reduce the glare from the outdoor lights, to make it more friendly to the wildlife and the people that want to see the sky, to have less abundance of the light, you know, so that...if you've seen these shots from spaces that go over Florida, you know, it's...
Tarpon Springs is a dive.
You know, when the space station goes over, it's just all lit up. It's, you know, that's...
Especially the people who live on the water.
Yeah.
We live on the water and I know those...the people and I...we have people who come along the water and break in and take stuff off of boats and things like that, and it's really difficult because people have got all those lights on the back part of their docks.
Yeah, and bright lights don't necessarily make it more secure. It's the way the lights are, the way, you know, so...
Well, there's a development going behind my property. Will be starting soon. We're gonna lose all the aisles. They're going to go elsewhere. We're going to lose a lot of night creatures that come out, and it's sad because it's beautiful, but...
Well, we know that, you know, whenever there's development, you know, we do lose some of the habitat, but I mean, that's...
That's...you know it's gonna happen.
That sort of comes with the territory, but we hope that we can mitigate that as much as possible.
I'd just like to add that if you haven't written on your plans and you don't need them, the interest of the environment and saving the applicant money, you leave them.
Be happy to do that.
I wrote on Sunday.
Thank you.
The only thing, it's very...I know we got everything on the computer, on our phones. It may be just me, but I can't...I couldn't open up all of it, and therefore, I know this is a waste of paper. I've got to, but I would like to be able to pick up a packet ahead of time.
Okay. Anita does, so you won't be the only person. And Mr. Carr sent me an email earlier today saying even timing, you really didn't have enough time to...
We didn't get it till Friday afternoon and...
But, I mean, I was literally receiving last-minute information.
Absolutely.
So we will try to get these...
If we can, I don't mind coming to pick it up, but...
Okay.
And we need to know the week, a week before, that there will be a P and Z meeting.
Okay.
Because I call up and ask, are we gonna have a meeting?
Right.
We really need to know a week before so we can plan that Friday to pick up.
Well, we just changed these two. I think the year's schedule was promulgated at some point in time. I don't know. Maybe we need to just email that yearly schedule for the...
Yeah, I'll make sure everybody gets it then.
That would be perfect to be emailed. There was just so much, it was just really hard and difficult to sit at the...
This was a difficult project, I, absolutely.
If you would in the future, Josh, when you email the, uh, backup materials, maybe in, in your forwarding email, just say, if you want a hard copy, you know, before the meeting, let me know, so that, for those who do want a hard copy.
I'll take one every time, cause I don't have a computer.
I understand.
I, I share a concern, too, with, I love getting emails, it's great to be able to pull up whenever, wherever I'm at, from waiting a half hour at a doctor's office, and pull up the plan to go through it. Time-wise is really kind of my focus, is, I, I respect the fact that this is a lot of hard work and a lot of information you guys are putting together, but we've got deadlines in place for certain reasons why you have to have these submitted to the city staff in this time, because of the exact reason that needs to go on to... I mean, if they don't get it there in time, I'm sorry, but that's the way the rules are there for, and it sucks to, excuse my language, but it's not, it's not pleasant to tell the applicant, you have to wait till next month, but out of respect for the board here, and our time, too, that we, we set aside in the weekends and at nights to go over this, um, it, it would be out of respect, I think, to us to have it. I've, I mean, I would ask for it like the Tuesday before the meeting, I mean, that's, it's six days beforehand, um, and that gives us ample time to go over it, and there's, as we go over it, though, I may have questions for you or for other staff that I won't be able to have answered on the Monday during lunchtime that I have at work to call you, and our schedules might not coincide and so on, so... That's just a, a request I have in my respectful, I mean, I know that you guys do a lot of work, and I know this, this is not something that I would wanna dig into myself and try to get ready for a meeting, but I understand there's a lot of hard work put involved, and I don't wanna diminish that, but I wanna ask for respect for us.
Yeah, we had a staff meeting about it, in response to your email, actually, and, yeah, we vowed to, to do a better job of getting these to you sooner.
Thanks.
And this board has in the past, on occasion, when there's been, you know, a complicated matter where we haven't felt that we had enough time, that we have told the applicant and the staff, that, you know, we're not gonna, um, make a decision, because we don't have enough time to go through the materials, when it's so voluminous and, or so complicated. And so, um, certainly, uh, make sure your applicants, um, know that, you know, we need to be comfortable with the backup, that we've got the information to make the decisions, not just from the testimony and the presentations, you know.
Right.
I also think we should, if we ever get one again like this one, we need to have a work session. And that was evident at the last meeting. I think when you get a large development in here, um...
Well, that's sort of what TRC does.
Yeah, maybe, but we can't, we are not, uh, privy to the TRC meetings, and as the planning, zoning me, uh, board, and we may never have one, but if we've got a, a heavy one coming in, we need to have a work session with the staff before the meeting, for understanding, uh, information, points of information. And also, and I believe, I also feel that if a del, developer wants to come here, and he doesn't have everything ready, don't bring it before us, cause it makes it hard for us. You know, like this Duke Energy letter, that was a big brouhaha at the last meeting. He doesn't have it, and he was told to, and there were, there were other, there were five other conditions that he was supposed to adhere to that he didn't.
Incidentally, your rules don't...
We need to have everything intact for it to come before this board.
Sure, and your, your rules don't allow presently for, uh, having work sessions. You can have regular meetings, or you can have special meetings. You'd be passing applications at both, be a matter of timing, but your rules presently as constructed don't allow for work sessions.
Okay, we'll bring it up with the commissioners then.
Any other board comments?
I've got one other comment, um, I brought this up before in the past, and I don't wanna let it go. As a concerned citizen, and kind of what recreational use has been diminished around Woodcombe Bayou, due to, um, the, the shoreline restoration with the granite hill, uh, blocks, and... the dangers that have now been created for kids and other people with no sidewalks for the city, and a very highly traffic, foot traffic, bike traffic, uh, water traffic, uh, road traffic, all above. I think something really needs to be done, um, on the city aspect of either developing some type of sidewalk use, or some type of boardwalk, or something that's safety-oriented, instead of just a shoreline, um, restoration with, cause it's become a sore sight to the, uh, people that come into town, the residents, and, um, any other aspects, so I don't know how that falls into our board, but if it could fall somewhere in that recommendation, it would be, I think, appreciated by lots of people in the town.
Is this around the bayou area?
We did, we did, uh, bring that up in, in discussion afterwards, and the city, uh...
It's disgusting.
Uh, informed us that they had, you know, it was sort of imposed on them, which, I don't know, sort of by a...
Okay, there's a way out of that, I think.
Corps of Army Engineers, but I think the city had input, but it never came before us.
Not only that...
That whole project didn't come before us, and, um, and there's others like that that have happened, and I don't know if it's just a interpretation of the code, but we might wanna take a look at that. And, and of course, changing the code is, is up to the, uh, commission, but we can make recommendations of that, you know.
Mr. Chairman, you may know this, cause you know a lot of the history of the area also. I have been told by quite a few old-timers here in Tarpon that that property was deeded in front of those homes by one individual here in the city. I can't remember his name. And that if we researched it, see if I've got this right now, the city was illegal or wrong in putting those rocks on some of that property in front of those homes, cause they didn't get permission because of ownership.
Of course, that'd be up to the owners that, that are offended by it to, to research that, but...
But they don't all know that, so I don't know, maybe we should research it. I'm going to a title company Friday to try to do it.
There is one item that isn't on the agenda, but, uh, this is our January meeting, and according to our rules and procedure, this is the, uh, meeting in which we're supposed to elect the chairperson and vice-chairperson.
We just did it.
We just did it.
We did it temporarily, we did it a couple months ago.
Yeah.
But, and, um, I mean, is that...
I move that it stays the same.
I second.
It's over with.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's been ratified, then we next year. Okay, uh, motion adjourned?
Yes.
Yes.
We're adjourned. At, uh, nine eighteen.
All right. That's all right, there's always a spare. Well, I went to the old-timers, uh, meeting, and they are hot under the collar. I've got the name written down at home, so I'm gonna...
See, I thought for sure there was gonna be a nice little walkway, little benches.
But I've got the gentleman's name written down at home, now I'm gonna go...
Good night.
Who has a title company, I want you to research this. It's like our municipal beach, there's a picture of a man or woman, they said gave that property to the city. No, they never owned it. Found out that the guy head of the Historical Society used to eat at their restaurant all the time. Keeps the place, and it doesn't agree. Oh, yeah. Josh, thank you. Still don't like development.
We wanted to put on a little better showing than last time.